All right, good evening. I'd like to call the October 19, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, and I'll be presiding over the meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Blackburn for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Tonight, I think we're witnessing a lot of violence in the world right now in many places, and I think we're so fortunate to be shielded from it here in our country, but there are many people who are suffering. And because of what we're all experiencing, I thought I would read a poem from Rumi. Rumi is a Persian mystic and spiritual master, and this is called "Prayer for Change." "I prayed for change, so I changed my mind. I prayed for guidance and learned to trust myself. I prayed for happiness and realized I am not my ego. I prayed for peace and learned to accept others unconditionally. I prayed for abundance and realized my doubt kept it out. I prayed for wealth and realized it is my health. I prayed for a miracle and realized I am the miracle. I prayed for a soulmate and realized I am the one. I prayed for love and realized it's always knocking, but I have to allow it in." And that was Rumi. Thank you.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two republics of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly, you have quorum.
Thank you very much. When I move on to the approval of tonight's agenda, Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Thank you, Mayor. We would like to remind the council that on last Monday night, that the council continued item number nine, which was the ordinance requested by Rens Ford's Motor Works to the November 9th meeting. Other than that, Mayor, the agenda is to be approved as soon as possible.
Move to approve as second.
I'd like to add to the... Oops, okay, I'm sorry. I'd like to add to the agenda the presentation of resolutions and appreciation to City Manager on the spectral recognition.
Second. Are you withdrawing your motion?
I do.
Okay. All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
If you could've seen your face, you had no idea what was coming. All right. Yeah. As most of the community knows already, Ms. Anne Wall, who has been the city manager of the city of Greenville for the last six-plus years, announced her retirement recently, and so this is her last meeting with the city council, and we want to do something special in appreciation for her service to the city of Greenville. So, we've put together a resolution, and this is actually going to be longer than her reading the next agenda item. So bear with me, this is going to take a really long time, because Anne has provided a long, lengthy career of service. I won't say how many years in the state of North Carolina, but she has quite a few things that we like to highlight. So whereas Anne E. Wall has devoted 36 years... There you go, I gave it away. In local government.
He started at 18.
There you go. With 32 of those years served in North Carolina, her career in the state has not only spanned many years, but many miles as well, serving in progressively responsible positions, beginning in Kinston as the Management Analyst and Personnel Director, and then Rocky Mount, first as the Budget and Valuation Manager, then the Director of Planning and Community Development, and next, the Assistant City Manager. Then on to Charlotte, where she served as the Assistant City Manager before culminating in her appointment in 2017 as the City Manager of Greenville. Whereas the City Manager is a Chief Administrative Officer for the city of Greenville and is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city and the implementation of the policy established by the city council. Whereas City Manager Wall has demonstrated exceptional skills with a keen awareness of local and regional interests and priorities, and a deft ability to find opportunities to collaborate and bring key stakeholders to the table, resulting in the betterment of the city and surrounding region. Notable examples of her collaborative efforts include the creation of the Greenville-ENC Alliance, a public-private partnership created to take a collaborative and comprehensive approach to economic development in Greenville and Pitt County; the Good Neighbor Initiative; a cooperative town-and-gown effort between the city and East Carolina University; the creation of the Eastern North Carolina Regional Managers Group, a group formed to help managers in the eastern part of the state share ideas and challenges; and the selection of Greenville as the host site for the Little League Softball World Series, an international sporting tournament that has put Greenville off the center stage and brought many accolades to the city. Whereas City Manager Wall has successfully led the city of Greenville in times of crisis, including major storm events, a ransomware attack, a global pandemic, and civic unrest. I think she deserves a retirement after that. Thanks to her decisive actions, compassion, and steady leadership, Greenville was able to weather these tumultuous times while maintaining high levels of service to citizens. Whereas City Manager Wall has a significant impact on the region, serving on several search committees to select key leaders and partners in the community, including the Chancellor of ECU, President of Greenville-ENC Alliance, President of the Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, and President/CEO of the United Way of Pitt County. Whereas City Manager Wall, an MPA, Master of Public Administration, graduate from University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, leaves an enduring impression on future leaders championing a robust internship program at the city of Greenville and serving on ECU's MPA Advisory Board, engaging students throughout class presentations and one-on-one connections. Whereas City Manager Wall has a strong sense of service to the community and serves on the boards of key entities such as the Greenville-ENC Alliance, Greenville Utilities Commission, Greenville-Pitt County Chamber of Commerce, and the United Way of Pitt County Board. Additionally, she has delivered meals on wheels, participated in trash pickups and community beautification events, purchased toys for needy children, supported domestic violence prevention efforts, and been a member of the Noon Rotary Club. Whereas City Manager Wall's vision, resourcefulness, and outstanding leadership has had a significant enduring impact on the city of Greenville. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Greenville on behalf of the citizens of the city of Greenville, that it does hereby express appreciation to Anne E. Wall and commends her for her distinguished service as City Manager of the city of Greenville, this 19th day of October 2023.
Short speech, short speech. Okay, short speech, only three minutes. Okay, only three minutes. I will say this, my whole career aspiration was to be a... Look, I get a little emotional, bear with me. I'm so sorry, and I'm on TV, so that's even more humiliating. My whole career aspiration was to serve as a City Manager, and I really wanted to do that in North Carolina. And serving these last six years as the City Manager of Greenville has been a real personal and professional privilege for me. I have loved this community, I have believed that this community has exceptionally bright future, and I'm really proud of the work that we have done over the last six years. Special thanks really must go to first the council, your support, your guidance, the ability to share my opinion on days that we might not necessarily all have agreed, but the fact was that we were able to do it in a very proactive, professional way, have good dialogue and good discussion. I truly appreciated that and the ability to work with this city council. You guys are a great group, and it's been a real honor. I want to call out the team that I work with, the department heads with the city, who we sit around the table frequently, we talk about issues, the department heads do a great job in leading their city. The team that I work directly with, Michael and Ken and Brock that's in the back, Donna, the Clerk's office, the Attorney's office, it's such a fabulous team, and we've only achieved what we've achieved because of the work of all of us working together. And finally, I just have to recognize the city employees. I think you all know that every time I get up here, I tell you all it's my privilege to really recognize the good work of city employees. I will tell you, they do great work every single day. It's a real honor to work beside them, to lead them in this organization, and I'm just incredibly proud of what they do and very thankful for the opportunity to have led them the last six years. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And you all surprised me on this one, okay.
Good, good, good.
Oh, I'm going to plop your ass.
Thank you very much.
Do you need a picture of us?
If we get a picture?
All right. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were scheduled to be subject to a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. Total of 30 minutes is allocated for each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Connolly, would you not have any registered speakers?
All right. Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period, we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Okay, yes, sir. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm going to continue that appointment.
Okay. Next is the Board of Adjustment. Councilmember Bell.
I'd like to appoint...
Sorry, I'd like to appoint Sterling Ruffin, please.
Okay. And that's... Oh, no, go ahead. We'll need a second.
We need a second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Ruffin.
Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I'd like to appoint Tom Farley. These are reappointments, Tom Farley. Todd Frilly, I'm sorry. Logan Harris. What's that one?
Procopio.
Procopio Serrano. And Ty Lica Harris.
Okay.
For the Youth Council.
Oh, you want to... We need a second on this one first.
Yeah, we need a second.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Frilly, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Serrano.
Serrano.
And Ms. Harris.
Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission. Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Dr. Kaitlin Levine at ECU, and also Anthony, as I know him, Robin Little.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Dr. Levine, and...
Robin Little.
Robin Little.
Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Councilmember Smiley.
Nominate Kimber Stone. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Stone.
Okay. Next, we have several for the Police Community Relations Committee. Just a reminder, this is direct appointments, no need for a second. First is for Carol Nyipolsey, Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
I'll have to continue that.
Sure. Okay. Next is Sterling Ruffin's seat, District Four. Councilmember Smiley.
Stacy Ruffin.
Congratulations, Ms. Ruffin.
Okay. Next is Sunny Bass's seat, Councilmember Robinson.
I would appoint Sunny Bass, please.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mr. Bass.
And then Diane Kulik's seat, Councilmember Bell.
I'd like to reappoint her, please.
Congratulations, Ms. Kulik.
All right. Next is the Shepherd Memorial Library Board. Councilmember Smiley.
I'm reappointing Chris Uffers.
Okay.
And continuing the other one.
Okay. And we just need a second on that.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
All right. Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Uffers.
Doctor.
Dr. Uffers.
And finally, we've got the Youth Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Yeah, I'd like to appoint Charles Farley, reappoint Charles Farley, Carson Farley.
Carson Farley.
George Huo, Morgan Worsley, Alexis Gilford, and Michael Brody.
So Alex Gilford, Carson Frilly, George Huo, Morgan Worsley, and Michael Brody.
Yes.
Okay. We just need a second.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
All right. Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations to Mr. Frilly, Mr. Huo, Ms. Worsley, or Mr.?
I think it's Ms.
Ms., okay. And Mr. Brody.
Yep, and Gilford.
And Mr. Gilford.
Yep. And that concludes the appointments. Mayor Connolly.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the Consent Agenda. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Consent Agenda includes one item this evening, which is a resolution approving lease agreements for hazard mitigation grant program properties.
Please, everybody, make a note of this. First time I'm not asking to pull an item off the consent agenda.
That's why we all waited.
It's raining.
I noticed that silence is like, nope, not going to do it.
So, are we going to move?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
As presented.
All right. That will be a first. Mark that down.
It is literally a first.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Now move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is an ordinance to annex Kittrel Farms Lot 1, property involving 12.1804 acres located along the southern right-of-way of Charles Boulevard between Bell's Chapel Road and Signature Drive. Chris Kelly with the Planning Department has the presentation. Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is located along the southern right-of-way of Charles Boulevard between Bell's Chapel Road and Signature Drive. This map shows the current city limits in green and the requested annexation in red. This property is located in the Hardy Creek watershed. The property is also located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map and is located in City Council voting district number four. This property is anticipated to yield 164,000 square feet of mini storage with an estimated tax value of $4.1 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kelly? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five is an ordinance requested by Unshakable Builders LLC to rezone 12.81 acres located at the current terminus of Tipton Road between Greenville Boulevard and Easy Street and 200 feet west of North Memorial Drive from R9S to OR. Lead Planner Shante Guby has the presentation. Ms. Guby?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. This rezoning is located in the northern section of the city. It is more specifically located west of North Memorial Drive. It's adjacent to Greenville Terrace subdivision. It is just south of Easy Street. This rezoning is a portion of a larger piece of property, so I'm going to show you where exactly that piece is. And this property will have access off of Tips and Drive, so I've just kind of put this little red line here so that you can see it. This is a photograph of the property. So this is looking north. This is food line in the background. So this rezoning is almost 13 acres. The property that you see is the whole entire... Excuse me, this is the whole entire property. The portion that's being rezoned is what is below the blue line. And again, that's almost 13 acres. The property is located in the Parkers Creek watershed. It will require 10-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. A portion of the property is located in the special flood hazard area, which is shown here in brown. There are no jurisdictional wetlands, but jurisdictional streams and riparian buffers This rezoning could generate a net increase of 537 trips. These trips, again, would be at the intersection of Greenville Boulevard and Memorial Drive, so that is a signalized intersection. During the review process, any kind of measures to mitigate traffic will be determined. In 1976, this property was rezoned from IU to R9. And then in 2005, the property was rezoned to its current zoning, which is R9S or single family. Some of you may remember that in 2005 and 2006, the city initiated several neighborhood rezonings where we rezoned neighborhoods that were single-family in character, but they had a zoning that would have allowed single-family or multifamily. This particular neighborhood was one of those neighborhoods that we rezoned the property to single-family. Some of those others were Truna and College Court. Currently, land use and the character map recommends commercial along the western right-of-way of Memorial Drive, essentially between Easy Street and Greenville Boulevard. It transitions into industrial to the north and low to medium-density residential, which is the yellow. The requested zoning is for high-density multifamily. It does allow single-family as well. In staff's opinion, this request is not in compliance with the future land use plan. Again, it recommends low to medium-density residential that's existing to an existing single-family neighborhood. This zoning pattern is the result of a citywide initiated... A city initiative to protect single-family zonings, so staff does recommend denial. And the Planning and Zoning Commission at their September 19, 2023 meeting voted five to one to recommend approval, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Guby? Councilmember Smiley?
Could you say the last part again, that this was a city-initiated?
The zoning is the result... The current zoning is a result of the citywide initiative to do the single-family zonings that I talked about in '05 and '06.
So that was city-initiated. This one's not, okay.
No. I'm sorry. I may have said that wrong.
Councilmember Blackburn?
You finished with your question?
Yep.
Did you say that staff recommends denial?
Yes, ma'am.
And could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. Once again, I'm just going to back up. It might be a little easier with a map. Again, this property is recommended for low to medium density, just what is shown in yellow. So the requested zoning is R6, so that is considered high-density. And so essentially, you have a difference between the R6 zoning can go up to about 17 multifamily units. For the low to medium density, that would be more in the neighborhood of about eight units per acre.
And it currently has the R9S?
Yes, so it's currently single-family only.
Okay. Thank you.
Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Daniels?
I would like to say I'm excited about this project. It is the beginning of new homes for those north of the river, and it allows us to expand and will bring us more resources as we move forward. Mr. Newkirk has been very generous speaking to the residents. I've spoke to several residents in Greenville Terrace. They are pleased with this project, and they are also looking forward to it. And with that being said, I move to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We'll move on to item number six.
Point of order, please, Mr. Mayor. I understand that when we stood up there earlier and we all approved that motion that we made for Anne, it was not captured by the microphones. And so we're being asked now to go back and vote in favor of that motion. So I move that we approve the resolution you read to the assembly earlier.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
The microphone's caught that one, right?
Yes.
All right.
So now I have an official residence.
Did the city attorney put you up?
I wonder who sent that message.
Bird. Hey, item number six, here we go.
Thank you. Item... Item six is an ordinance requested by North State Steel, Inc. to rezone a total of 13.5267 acres located along the northern and southern right-of-way of West Gum Road and 450 feet east of Old River Road from RA 20 to IU. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city. The property is just west of the airport, so on the right-hand side, this is a runway. And again, the property is located on both sides of West Gum Road. So this is a photograph of West Gum Road to the north, and this is a photograph looking to the south. All of the property combined is about 13 and a half acres. The property is located in the Parkers Creek watershed. If stormwater rules apply, will require 10-year detention, nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. A portion of the property is located in the special flood hazard area, what is blue. It is, there are no jurisdictional wetlands exist on the property. However, there are streams and riparian buffers. This rezoning could generate a net decrease of about 266 trips per day, so that is between the existing zoning and the requested zoning. So the property is currently zoned RA 20. It could yield about 40 single-family lots. Under the proposed zoning, the site could accommodate about 65,000 square feet of industrial and warehouse space. The request is for IU. There is already IU adjacent to the property. The future land use plan map recommends commercial at the intersection of Belvoir Highway and Old River Road and Redmond Lane, and then it transitions into industrial to the west, which is the gray. Again, the future land use plan recommends industrial. The requested zoning is for unoffensive industry. The property is already adjacent to similar zoning. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the future land use plan and the Horizons Plan. Staff recommends approval. And at the September 19, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, they recommended, unanimously recommended approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Councilmember Daniels?
I saw in the picture there was just one home.
Yes.
Is that the only home that's being?
I believe so. Most of it is wooded, that you can tell. But given our ability to take a picture, that was about as far as the expanse that we can actually get in the picture.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Conley, my name is Steve Spruill. I'm here representing the North State Steel tonight. We just want to point out, we got unanimous approval at the planning board meeting, and we're in compliance with the land use plan. If you have any questions, we'll do our best try and answer them.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Spruill. Anybody have any questions? All right.
Were you part of the group that got some of the residents together to make them aware of what was going on and what was happening with the airport? No?
I was not. No.
Okay. I'll save my thank yous for later then. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to item seven.
Oh, I'd like to say something.
No way.
I do want to thank the staff at the airport, residents out in Greenfield Terrace, and in my community were very pleased that they brought the community together, that explained to them what's going on. Communication is very important as we continue to grow and thrive in Greenville, and so that effort is very much appreciated. I'm sure you have something to do with it, council member.
Not me.
Robinson, aren't you on the board?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
He's going to take all the credit for it.
Sure, yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, because that is much appreciated.
I'll make sure all that gets back to the staff at the Airport Commission.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Now we'll move on to lucky number seven.
Okay, Mayor. Item seven is an ordinance requested by Derek P. Dunn to rezone .09 acres located along the eastern right-of-way of Roosevelt Avenue and 130 feet south of West Fifth Street from R6 to CDF. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property, this property is centrally located in the city. It's located south of West Fifth Street, so downtown would be to your right-hand side. Memorial would be to your left-hand side. Just to the north, this is the Greenville PD's West substation. This is a photograph of the property off of Roosevelt, so Fifth Street would be to your left. This lot is 0.09 acres, or about 4,000 square feet, so the lot is undevelopable as it currently is, so it would need to be recombined. I will say that the city of Greenville does own the lots to the north and to the south of this property. This property drains to the Tar River. If stormwater rules apply, 10-year, it will require 10-year detention, nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The property is not impacted by any special flood hazards, and there are no jurisdictional wetland streams or buffers on the property. Again, due to its size, the site is undevelopable. So this is a map of the West Greenville revitalization area. This plan is incorporated into the Horizons Plan. This is part of what would have been called the Center City and West Greenville Redevelopment So I have, the whole entire area is encompassed by this dashed pink line. The subject property, I placed a red star, and it's located in focus area number six. And so these are the policy statements out of that plan to improve and revitalize existing neighborhoods, improve, preserve, and develop residential areas, and encourage the rehab of dilapidated units, the development of vacant lots, encourage the preservation, renovation, code enforcement, and rehab of older housing stock. The property is currently zoned R6, so that allows single-family, duplexes, and multifamily. The property to the north is CDF. The request tonight is CDF. So this district not only will allow the same housing, but it will also add a commercial option as well. The future land use plan recommends mixed use, which is the purple. That essentially runs south of Fifth Street, about the width between Fifth and what would be Sixth Street. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Center City West Greenville Plan, the Horizons Plan, and the future land use plan. Staff recommends approval. And at the September 19, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, it was unanimously recommended for approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number eight. Madam Manager?
Technically, it'll be five zero.
Mr. Smiley?
Five zero then?
Five zero it is.
One abstention.
All right. We'll move on to item number eight.
Thank you. Item eight is an ordinance requested by Aggravest LLC to rezone 5.158 acres located along the southern right-of-way of Old Fire Tower Road and 200 feet west of Hungate Drive from RA 20 to OR. Again, Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the southeastern quadrant of the city. It is located south of Old Fire Tower Road, and it is, you have County Home Road to your right-hand side. This is a photograph of Old Fire Tower Road, so this, the way you're looking at it now, County Home Road would be to your left. This property is just a little over five acres. It is located in the Fork Swamp watershed. If stormwater rules apply, will require 25-year detention, nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The property is not impacted by the special flood hazard area, and there are no jurisdictional wetland streams or buffers. This request could generate an increased trip, generate a net increase of 310 trips per day. So in your staff report, there were some additional staff comments that we added, and it was specifically talking about what I'm just going to call sort of this, the center of RA 20, or what you see there in the green. And you already have some OR zoning to the north, and you also have a little bit of OR zoning to the south. This particular OR zoning allows office, and it also has a multifamily component. So under the current zoning, the site could accommodate about 10 single-family homes, and under the proposed zoning, the site could accommodate about 60 multifamily units. So the interior area south of Fire Tower Road and west of County Home Road is shown as office. We've talked about several times now about the impact of COVID and what that's had on the demand for office zoning. So the reason that I talk about that is because more than likely, all of this RA 20 property that you see is more than likely going to be rezoned to OR, which is an office option, and it also has the multifamily component. So in staff's opinion, in this instance, the rezoning is in compliance. It meets the intent of the future land use plan, which is it is providing, or it's providing a transition from the commercial along Fire Tower Road further to the south. Staff recommends approval. And at the September 19, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, it was unanimously recommended for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
I do.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Did I see that some of this rezoning is in a, the 100-year floodplain?
No.
500?
Not at all. Let me flip back. There you go. So what you're looking for would be the blue?
Oh, the other side. Yep, got it. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Mike Baldwin. I represent Aggravest LLC. That's Don Sutherland, Jeff, and Mike Aldridge and Willie Warren. As Shante said, it's in, well, it kind of navigates the comprehensive plan due to the what's surrounding it and just the, the lack of need for office zoning anymore. You just, you don't see them being built like they are. But it's multifamily to the south, OR to the west, north, and then commercial to the east. Be glad to answer your questions.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Baldwin?
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baldwin. Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Appreciate that.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll skip over what used to be number nine and move on to number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 10 is an ordinance requested by Track West Partners to amend Title IX, Chapter IV, Appendix A, Table of the Uses of the City Code to add Code 8 Services PP Auto Wash as a permanent use in the medical, general, commercial, and the medical heavy commercial zoning districts. Again, Ms. Gooby?
Yes.
This is a request to allow standalone car washes as a permitted use in the MCH and MCG districts. So since they have an M in them, that means that these are districts that are found in and around the medical area. Currently, there are only three other commercial districts that allow standalone car washes, and that's CDF, CG, and CH. The purpose of both the medical, general, commercial, and heavy commercial is to provide commercial services in and around the medical area. So this map currently shows you the MCG and MCH zoning that we currently have. So MCG is shown in yellow, MCH is shown in brown. Okay? And in staff's opinion, this request is in compliance with Policy 4.31, which is modernize and diversify the local economy, support the growth of a variety of employment opportunities and businesses that diversify Greenville's economy, and provide workers with a range of skill sets and training, and encourage business growth within the incorporated areas to expand and diversify Greenville's tax base. Staff recommends approval. And at the September 19, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission, again, it was unanimously recommended for approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Smiley?
So let me guess, all the other zonings were full on car washes, right? They all, okay. What, why would, why was car washing, car washes not included in the medical zonings to begin with?
I think, first of all, standalone car washes have not seen the increase that we've had since the last couple of years, so I think it was just something that wasn't really needed at the time. And so because of that, it was not, it was not included in the medical districts, mainly because we, again, always try to make sure that we have enough real estate for medical uses. However, I think this is a very small adjustment in adding this use.
You know, medical and car washes go hand in hand, right?
Oh, I know, yeah. And, and car washes will never, they're, they're, you know, they're only going to get one or two, right? I mean...
No comment. All right. Any other questions for Ms. Gooby? All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board Open for board discussion. Councilmember Blackburn.
I do have a question that I didn't get asked, Mrs. Gooby, when she was up. So sorry. It was sort of prompted though by Councilmember Smiley's comment, which is, is there, I guess I'm just wondering why this use in this zoning and do you see any adverse possibilities, unintended consequences from approving this?
I don't think so. Again, I think this is just a very small adjustment in adding this use to both of those districts.
And presently, it's allowed, I guess, in a CH-type zoning?
CDF, CG and CH. So only three other districts.
And again, you don't see any conflict with the medical type district for this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley.
Is there an argument to be made in favor of this and who's going to make that argument and where are they?
I cannot speak for the representative.
So there is, so nobody is making an argument in favor of this, this issue?
I do not believe anyone is here that I recognize.
I mean, do you think it's?
I'll make a motion if any, unless somebody else has a question. I move to deny.
I'll second that.
Let's have some discussion about that.
All right. Hold on a second. So motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilmember Bell.
What's, and this is a legitimate question. What is the reason for the denial, other than just there's no one here? Because we had another issue that came before us tonight that no one was here for or against and we, we approved that one. So that can't be the only reason we deny items.
I think that the medical district's there for reasons, there for medical purposes. This is not a medical purpose. If we're going to change, if we're going to add a non-medical use into the, into that district, I need to be convinced and I haven't heard any argument at all as to why it should be different. It seems to me that the medical district's working well as it is and there's no reason to change it.
There's, there's other uses other than medical in that district though, don't we? Don't, don't we have gas stations in the medical district?
We made a modification.
Yeah.
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 No, I'm familiar that there are other uses, but every one of those has been explained and justified and there's been a good reason for doing it. I don't see one here.
If I may.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm inclined to support it just because I don't see any compelling evidence about, that makes this a good decision and I also appreciate what Councilmember Smiley says about wanting to somewhat, you don't want to say restrict, but you want to focus on medical uses. Certainly there are residences and there are gas stations. These are ancillary uses, but can we say that a car wash is in any way a supportive use for medical district? I'm not convinced and had someone perhaps been here to persuade me, I might have been persuaded, but I don't see a compelling reason to, to change it.
I will say, Councilmember Bell brought a good point that we did make a change a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, where we allowed gas stations in medical uses and I don't think there's any correlation between that and medical, but, I mean, I will personally say that I feel like we've got a lot of car washes in our city, right?
I can all agree on that.
I mean, I think everybody could say we've got a plus. But ultimately, but ultimately, my thought process is, is that it's not my money. If it's in a commercial-like use, you know, the person, the applicant has the right to be able to make, ask for a modification. It's their, their personal property. If it's not going to adversely impact anybody, I don't, I don't know if there's a justification for shooting down the, the request.
I mean, we, we have McDonald's in, I probably shouldn't say that. We, we have fast, we have fast food businesses in the metal commercial district that probably don't serve the best interests of people's health either. So I just, you know, I, I understand what you're saying. There's no one here making an argument for it, but there's also no one making an argument against it. I agree with the mayor and probably what everybody is saying, that we have a lot of car washes in this city. But I just, I can't, can't deny something just because somebody, you know, somebody's not here making an argument for it. I just can't do that.
And also, Mayor, there's a lot of residents that live in that area and there is not a car wash in that area at all. So it is a very heavily populated area and people haven't, I haven't heard anyone speaking against it or talking about not having it, so.
Councilmember Smiley. Good. All right. There's been a motion, anal discussion. Motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn to deny the request. All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand.
Two to two.
So is it?
The motion fails two four.
Yeah. Four, okay. So I guess that.
Make a motion to a person.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hush, let's raise our hand. Let's make it consistent. Raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand.
Okay. Motion passes four to two.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 11, our final public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The final public hearing.
And's final public hearing.
Is an ordinance requested by Race Track Petroleum, Inc. to amend the future land use and character map for 3.405 acres from office institutional to commercial for the property located at the southwestern corner of the intersection of North Memorial Boulevard and Independence Boulevard. Ms. Gooby.
So this is a request to amend the future land use plan. Staff uses the land use plan as well as council uses the land use plan when we're looking at rezonings. So this property is located in the northern section of the city. It is specifically along North Memorial Drive. It's across the street from Thurman Fisher and it's adjacent to Westwood Mobile Home Park and then these are some duplexes just to the north. So this is the intersection at Independence Boulevard. So the subject property would be here on your left, essentially behind that fence. I don't know if you can actually see it or not, but it would be in this open area. This is a survey of the property. It is almost three and a half acres. This request could generate a net increase of about 2,500 trips per day. 60% of those trips would make a left-hand turn or go to the north. Due to the number of trips, a TIA or Traffic Impact Analysis will be required by NC DOT. This intersection is not signalized. The current, the property is currently zoned RA20. The future land use plan recommends office along the section of Memorial Drive. Again, we have talked about the demand for office being very low. This property could potentially yield about 7,500 square feet of office. The request is to change the plan from office institutional to commercial. So under the commercial, this property could yield a convenience store. When the Horizons Plan was last updated, that was in 2016, we had a Comprehensive Plan Committee. They developed these eight guiding principles when they were looking at the future land use plan and deciding where land uses should go. So in staff's opinion, this request for commercial is in keeping with number eight, which is sustainable development practices. And at the September 19th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, it was unanimously recommended for approval and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Smiley.
In most of the previous rezonings, you've walked us through a graduated zoning pattern. Could you walk us through the graduated zoning pattern here?
I can.
That, and before you talk about, you know, separating commercial and residential and trying to put an intermediate zoning in between?
I think that, I'm going to, I'm going to flip forward just for a second. So if we're looking at the future and five years beyond, the whole intent of this, the land use plan that you see right now is there is no residential in this area. I know that right now there is. There's a mobile home park and there are also some duplexes. But as far as the future land use plan, when the Comprehensive Plan Committee looked at it, this area was envisioned without a residential component and especially one at this particular intersection. So if we take that in mind and think of that it's non-residential, I think that the idea of office and this much office and the lack of demand is probably not going to materialize. So at this particular, I'm going to flip forward to see if I have a better map. I'm sorry, I'm going the wrong direction. Let me try this one. Maybe this will be a little helpful. So at this point, you have an intersection right above the bypass. So this is the on-ramp to it. This area here is, I'm not sure it's even developable, given that there are some environmental constraints. So that's why as far as staff's opinion, I think it still works to have commercial at this intersection. And again, I see this as non-residential, not now, but years ahead.
But it is currently zoned RA20, a residential zoning, and there are in fact residences on the property.
No. No one lives on the property. It is.
On Josie Lane, Charlie, Rawl, Atkinson.
This, this is populated.
That is zoned, zoned residential.
Yes.
And there are residences on it.
On the subject property?
No, on the property that is zoned residential.
Yes.
So the future land use plan proposes one day, those people, those residences would not be there.
Yes.
But at the moment, they are. And the land, and you're, and the proposal is to put commercial zoning directly adjacent to it with no, with no intermediate zoning in between them.
That is correct.
Hasn't that historically, in almost every other presentation that I've seen from you, haven't that, hasn't that been an argument against a zoning, that you wanted to see a, an intermediate zoning in between, a high-intensity zoning and a low-intensity zoning?
It can be, but we have places right now that have commercial beside a single family.
I understand we have them, but whenever you've come to us and said, this is the basis upon which we make our zoning, you have argued in favor of intermediate zoning between a high-intensity zoning and a low-intensity zoning, especially when that low-intensity zoning was a residential zoning. And I'm just curious why you're not making that argument now? What's different about this that's so, that makes it different from all the other things that you've, this, every other time you've made this presentation?
Right. We, we have talked about transitional zoning. There could be a buffer there. I, I'm comfortable with it being the way that it is, in staff's opinion.
There is no need for a transitional buffer. I'm zoning here.
They will have a vegetative buffer when that is built because the residential is already there. So they will have a vegetation buffer between the commercial and the residential on the commercial side.
So you're saying there is no need for a transitional zoning between commercial and residential?
It is not always necessary, no.
Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels.
So did you say at some point, you don't look at, you're not looking at the residents remaining there?
I, I'm not saying today.
Right.
I am saying that, that as far as the land use plan is concerned, and again, this runs from five, 10, 20 years in the future, this was not envisioned with any kind of residential uses.
Right. But they're there, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we look at changing that at some point? Because that, this is my district and there are a lot of residents there on both sides.
Right.
So I get.
Well, this was done in 2016, right? So we are rolling right up to that 10-year mark and we are just a couple of years away from it. And I think we are due a time to go, to go back and to look at our land use plan map, right? We're close to 10 years out and there's been a lot of changes in real estate and the development, just like we talked about with the office character, that there is not a demand for office, right? And so it would be fair to say that it, it would be time to go back and have a revamp, have an update of our land use plan. I'm working within the confines of the land use plan I have in front of me.
And I understand that. I guess I just can't get past at some point, we're looking at residents possibly losing their homes. I can't, am I, am I off on this or?
Well, that would be up to the property owner, correct? That would not be the city.
Right, exactly. But we're putting things in place for it to happen.
Potentially.
Okay.
Excuse me, I do think it's important to point out. Shante, can you go to the map that just shows what the future land use plan says? This is the future land, the current plan, Shante. There you go. This is what the future land use plan set in 2016, okay? And that, and the future land use plan identifies this area as office institutional, probably due to its proximity to the industrial park and the industrial uses north of the river. So I, certainly it's the council's prerogative to choose whether or not this site, there is an amendment to this site related to it, but staff is not making any, this map is what was approved in 2016.
But they're not asking for, but the petition is for commercial.
Right. I'm not, I, 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 I'll just say this, Councilmember Smiley, my comment was not really related to this lot as much as to address.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Daniels' suggestion about the city suggesting that this area would not be residential. That in fact happened in 2016, not, not recently, in 2016.
I understand, but that's still a concern.
Of course.
In any way you look at it.
Councilmember Blackburn.
So this is a very complicated issue because we have a land use plan that was approved many years ago that had a certain vision for this space. We have since then experienced a global pandemic and throughout the world, the demand for office space is just plummeting. And without question, demand for office, new office space is just not happening right now. At the same time, we have a lot of people living here and I want to say that I'd like to support the council member who represents this area with her concern about the people living there. You know, is this a good future direction for this property? I, I don't know and maybe the next future land use plan adjustment or revision when we update it can address it in a different way. We're just dealing with a lot of moving pieces here that, that don't really fit the current circumstances on the ground. So I'm, I'm very likely to, to support Councilmember Daniels in opposing this.
Keep in mind, this, this is just questions for staff. We can have this discussion after we go through the public hearing.
Yeah.
So any other questions for our staff? Thank you very much, Ms. Gooby. Public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Spoiler alert.
Mayor Connolly, counsel, good evening. My name is William McKinney. I'm an attorney at Haynesworth Sinclair Boyd out of Raleigh. I represent Race Track, who's here today, and property owner as well, who welcome the chance for a few words. I appreciate the debate here in front of the council and I think it's, and I've been grateful for working with city staff who's been professional and helpful and instructive to us through this land use process. Briefly, I would point out to council, as you're aware, that requests and change of the comprehensive land use status is just for this parcel of undeveloped property. There's no resident, there are no residences on this property at this time. In fact, my client Race Track, to their credit, has met with the neighborhood, has met with that community. They are not opposed to this project and the mitigating factors that Ms. Gooby identified would remain in place where this property could go forward and be rezoned, which is subject to a separate motion before council and we look forward to presenting that information at the right time. I would point out that based on this comprehensive land use plan, my client Race Track, other entities would look to make decisions on where to invest and how to work with the city to the extent there is a, is a ratchet or a movement in a certain direction. If it's from office, which I think we're all in agreement, the trends are that it's being under-resourced. How long that trend line goes is subject for future considerations, but to accommodate some of the growth needs of the city and be in alignment with the, with the goals that the city's identified for why parcels are located and designated the way they are, we think this is certainly consistent and promotes sustainability for where that land can be best utilized. Happy to take any questions. Also welcome opportunity for the landowner to speak, so inclined.
Where's it going?
My name is Powell Dew. I want to thank Shante for her work with the planning board. My family's owned this piece of property for many, many years. We did own the mobile home park and sold it about two or three years ago. And the investors that have purchased the mobile home park have invested a lot of capital into this particular park, so it ever becoming an office. capital into this particular park, so it ever becoming an office situation would never occur. There's duplexes beside it. They would never become offices. A middle school that's in this section that would never become office. And so the zoning or the land use plan would never really feasibly work there. People are coming out of Bethel, coming there, and this is an ideal location for this proposed use, for a commercial use. You ask about the residents and the impact on them. I see residents every day leaving the mobile home park, walking down the highway, all the way to Sheetz on the other side, all the way to Food Line, just to get a drink, or just to get a sandwich, or just to get something. And by having this particular retail location, they would be able to purchase the things that they need without traveling all the way down. People coming into Greenville have to go under the Everpass and then work their way back around to get back on the highway. I think this is an excellent use of the property. I think the adequate buffers between this commercial and a resident would take care of those issues, and I think it would be an appeal for, for our community. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
So you know I'm concerned.
What's that?
You know I'm concerned. I, I live north of the river. So you bring in something that, you know, like you said, the safety of individuals walking down there, I think it's a wonderful thing. I, I have no complaints against that. But I live in a world where if we're looking at the future and knowing that these residents, excuse me, may not have a home in the future, that bothers me.
Oh, they will be there. That park was built in the 1970s. It's been there. It's gone through terrible times, and they're building it back and investing a whole lot of money, and a lot of new homes are moving in there. Those people are not going to move. That park is not going to change.
Not that they're not going to move. Are we going to force them to move at some point, is my concern? Not you, not you, not the city. I'm just saying, with, with the things that are happening. Because we've been through that already in Greenville, and I don't want to go through that again.
It happened, it happened on Fire Tower, I understand.
Yeah, and so while I commend wanting to bring something, especially north of the river, especially to those residents who, excuse me, don't have. I ju, I just have some concerns, and maybe, excuse me, when you all, I'm not sure who spoke with the residents, do they have a clear understanding? Because this is a poor neighborhood. How many people came? Like, what were some of their responses? Okay, he's coming up to help you.
Okay.
Okay.
You need to think else?
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Pease. I'm here with Race Track. I personally, I met, along with one of my colleagues, with the neighbors. It was two, with two gentlemen from their corporate office. We talked about a buffer, a transitional buffer. That was the primary reason for the call. It was a very beneficial conversation. When we get to the point to where we're finalizing a site plan, you know, if we get there, we will work with them, continue to work with them, and address their needs. Really, their main concern also was a loss of visibility, so we plan on working with them to do some sort of shared signage. Overall, though, they're not opposed to us, and it was a very beneficial conversation.
So how, how many people came out?
As far as homeowners, there was no residences, no of the owners. It was, or, excuse me, there was, none of the individuals who lived there. It was with the actual owner of the park.
Okay, so I misunderstood that, okay. Do, do we plan to meet with the residents?
We ultimately will. So as of right now, just this being a proposed amendment to the land use map, typically that, that process is something that will do in the actual rezoning, which for us would be the next domino to fall after this.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? On behalf of the applicant, may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right, seen none. Those in opposition of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Smiley?
I have a question for Shante. If this were to pass, what type of zoning would staff, what, which, what commercial zoning would staff support there?
I think that probably the optimal, if you will, less intensive that would allow something like that, I think would be a CG, commercial zoning. That would allow a convenience store, would require a specialty use permit. I don't know what they're going to request.
CG is general commercial, not commercial zoning, correct?
That's right. Of course, I, I do not know what they're going to request at this time. I do not have a rezoning request.
Is there still a neighborhood commercial zoning?
It is, but it, it allows a convenience store.
I got no problem with a convenience store. I mean, I mean, if it goes commercial, that's obviously what they're, what they have in mind. I was wondering, what is the minimum? And that's not what we're talking about here. I'm just curious about looking into the future. What's the least intensive zoning that would, staff would support? Or the most intensive supporting? And you're saying CGs. I get it. Thank you.
Yeah, or CN, either one, neighborhood commercial.
Thank you. I do think that, they haven't really spoken with the residents. And the idea that you're going to talk with the residents after we already changed the land use map. I mean, if they come back with a rezoning after the land use map's changed, that zoning's going to, that's going to be a fait accompli. That's, that's just going to pass. I think that if they really want to, you know, to confirm that the people who live there are happy with the idea of a commercial zoning right next to their residential zoning, then the time for that conversation is, with respect to your, your point, was at this time, when there is, when the map, when the decision is being made. I think it's a little disingenuous to suggest that you can change the map and then come back and have, you know, and that a rezoning to the, to the use already on the map would actually be something, or that's actually going to be a, you know, a, you know, much of a consideration or much of a contested event. So I think that this is premature.
And, and so I agree with, with everything that Councilmember Smiley said. But I also think that the opportunity for some growth and, and businesses north of the river would be, especially in this area, because they've never had anything, would be good. I would recommend that we table this, so that we can speak with the residents and then come back.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley. I got one more question, Shante. I might be able to ask you, or might, actually might need to ask the applicant. In the mobile home park, are the homes that are, that are there, are they owned by the landowner, or are they owned individually by the actual? Yeah.
I do not know.
Probably about 50/50. 50% own their own home. Well, as a matter of fact, all of them are owned by their own people. They're, they're, they're bringing in mobile homes and owner financing them for the people that are living there. So the people that are living there own their own homes.
Okay, so they just have lot leases?
There's lot rent, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. All right, so motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Motion was made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Smiley.
What is the motion?
To table this until they can meet with the residents. I don't, I mean, can we, we can request that, we can't, I mean, they don't have to do that.
Well, he said that's his plan eventually anyway. Is that not your plan? Did I misunderstand that?
It just stays tabled.
Ultimately, yeah. If that's the city's request, it's for, we're willing to meet.
Counselor, belabor the point. Councilmember Daniels, certainly, we have an interest in meeting with the neighborhood and the community to discuss plans. Agree with you that this is an opportunity to bring use of business to the region and bring some jobs, as well as the opportunity to develop a property that's otherwise undeveloped, as we recognize. Certainly will respect council's wishes, however the vote goes. I would observe to Councilmember Smiley's point that the client doesn't tend to bring this to a rezoning, and if, that decision as well would fall to this council. And so would humbly suggest there's not a fait accompli, that the decision will still rest with you as the council to make a decision on the rezoning, setting aside what the, you're, you're the, it's axiomatic, you're the decider, and we would want to make the best position we can.
Counselor, with respect, I've been on this council for 10 years, and if that, if that piece of property is the, if the map says C, and they come back with a commercial zoning, it's going to, it is a fait accompli. So, and so my question to you is, do you understand the point we're making that, you know, that the way these processes work, which obviously you understand quite well, this is your profession, the, the residents of that neighborhood do not understand this well. This is not their profession. And what we're, what I'm saying, my accountant, there may be people who agree with me, is that if you intend to engage them, intend to get their support, and explain to them what is happening, and make sure they understand what their options are, then the time to do that is prior to requesting the map change, not after the map, map is changed and before the, the rezoning request is made.
And if I may, the law.
Can you let him answer my question?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What was the question, sir?
Do you agree that the best way to, for the residents of that neighborhood to understand what's getting ready to happen and why, the time to talk to them is now? Prior to the map change?
I may not necessarily agree with that, and I don't want to belabor the point, and certainly want to let the council proceed with the voting. I think the question would be, where is neighborhood input of maximal importance on a rezoning process? And is that as part of a comprehensive land use situation? Or is that part of the rezoning application that goes in front of the city?
And you, it is your contention, as I hear you telling me, that the, that time is during, at the rezoning, not at the map change?
I think both opportunities, sir, are opportunities that the community, the neighbors, and the entity seeking the rezoning bring the position, bring the petition in front of the council for.
So this is a good time, is what you're saying? You're saying both are good times, so this would be a good time to talk to the.
I think they're two separate, two different questions, and I don't want to argue this beyond the point, just to say that both decisions ultimately rest with you as council.
Well, excuse me, can you give me a second? You're a professional. You're here representing your client. I'm asking you professional opinion in service of council's decision here. I think I heard you say, heard you say that either a, that prior to making the map change, or prior to requesting a rezoning, either one of them would be appropriate times to consult with the, the people who live nearby.
I'm going to give an answer that may be nuanced, but I don't want you to think that I'm.
I'm happy to hear nuance.
I'm ducking the issue. I think the more concrete of those two proposals is the rezoning petition that comes in front of council.
And you think that would give the neighbors the maximum opportunity to understand and impact what's happening next to them?
I, I think that's fair to say, and I think it's ultimately council's decision on whether to make the decision or not.
Well, respectfully, I disagree that that's going to give the residents a maximum input on this. Because again, if you guys, if you change the map now, and you come back six months from now and ask us to change the rezoning, the residents aren't going to have much to say then. Thank you. I appreciate your patience.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn?
I just have a brief remark, and it may require the city attorney to weigh in. The point here is, I understand it, as a student of public policy, is that when you change the land use plan, unless there is a, we're almost bound by law to follow what the land use plan says. This is really where it happens. And again, we don't, I don't think there's fines or sanctions or anything like that. But my understanding is that the land use plan really does bind us, and it should bind us, because we have a responsibility to the public to act in predictable ways. So I appreciate what you're saying, is that there will be another opportunity. But once the land use plan is changed, that is how the land is intended to be developed. So I have to concur with Councilmember Smiley that this is not the time to act, and then kind of let the residents weigh in later. And I'm inclined to support Councilmember Daniels' motion to table. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bell?
Counselor, appreciate the input, and you're welcome to take your seat. The debate needs to be between us, not between you and us, so thank you very much. I would say that, you know, Shante, please correct me if I'm wrong. We put out the public hearing signs for this, right? So the neighborhood was notified, right?
Yeah, there might even be a picture of the sign in, in my picture. I'll just dial back to it, but the.
I think I remember one of us.
Essentially, the rule, it's, it's hard to see in this one, is no less than 10 days, no more than 25, is the, is general statutes for notification.
So people coming to and from this area, this sign was visible to them?
That's correct.
All right, so.
So the sign is, can you go back to the picture, please? Because I, I go in this area. So the sign is inside by the wood. You can't see the wood blocks. So go down by, if you're just passing by, you won't see the sign. If you're a resident and you're coming out, you'll see the sign. But again, do those residents understand exactly what that means? That's the question.
Yeah, I understand.
And I don't think it's fair for us to assume they should, because they don't. Well, I can't speak for them, but some of them may not. And it's our responsibility, I feel, to let them know, okay, this is coming. You're not going to lose your home. Again, I say this, and it's no disrespect to anybody, but we've been through this before in Greenville, okay? So I'm not going to just say, okay, let's rezone because a sign was out there. We need to talk to people face to face. We need to let them know what's happening, good, bad, or indifferent, and where we plan on going. That's just my take on it. And, and I'm obligated, as the one that they chose to represent them, to fight for that.
I understand. Shante, we also send out mail notices as well, correct?
We, we mail notices to property owners, real estate property owners.
Okay, so if they own the trailer, they may not have received it.
That is correct. They would not have received a notification. Which is part of the reason we advertise in the newspaper, and we post signs too.
Gotcha. I understand. You know, I personally am of the opinion that, you know, Planning and Zoning sent this to us, I believe it was 6-0, if I'm not mistaken. And another council member tonight has made an argument that if there is no one here to speak against something, you know, or for it, that we should not pass it. There are people here speaking in favor. There are not people speaking against it. And again, the final decision when a rezoning comes before gives us the ability to say yes or no. I think a good path forward for everyone involved, for the sake of being effective and efficient, is to, you know, approve this tonight with the direction to the applicant that they need to have these, these input sessions with, with the neighborhood before they come back to us for a rezoning.
Approve the motion?
But.
Approve, I'm sorry, approve the request with the direction that they need to go speak with that neighborhood. If they don't do that, we have the ability as a board to, to say no.
Right, but I will say, two, one of the items that we approved tonight, they did go to the residents prior to it, excuse me, prior to it even going to Planning and Zoning. That they went to the residents, they spoke with them, they had neighborhood meetings so that they can understand, all of this is going on. We're just moving forward, and the residents aren't even aware of what's going on, and that's not fair to them.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a question, either for Ms. Gooby, or I don't know if the city attorney needs to weigh in on this one, or, and with the master of public administration, you may be able to as well, but what are the requirements? Because really, we are, as I understand it, we are obligated to follow the land use plan. So if we change it tonight, we're obligated to do that in a rezoning. Can someone address council's obligation to uphold the land use plan when it comes to a rezoning?
Councilmember Blackburn, I would point out to you that on an earlier item, item number five, which is an ordinance proposed by Unshakable Builders, the staff recommended, indicated to you that that plan, that rezoning was not in conformance with the land, with the future land use plan. And the council went forward and approved that rezoning. the future land use plan, and the council went forward and approved that rezoning. So, while the land use plan is an important direction for the council to identify what the possibilities would exist, what the future looks like, the council does have the prerogative, and you exercised it tonight, to go against that future land use plan.
Okay, very good example, good example.
That's an MPA?
I know, that's that MPA kicking in, I should know how that works. And that maybe is a good example of how the exception, you know, to the rule. As a council member, my practice is typically, clearly not tonight, to uphold, to look at the land use plan as, again, the way the city wants to act in predictable ways. And that's really what is, to me, what I see this as a representative. Of course, I want to be supportive to the council member who represents these residents, but just as a policymaker, is to act in predictable ways, and especially when people are involved. And the land use plan is what circumscribes us to acting in predictable ways, and again, especially where people are involved.
Councilmember Bell, hold on a second. Councilmember Bell?
You know, we also have that responsibility to the applicant who is here tonight and is the owner of the property and has paid taxes in this city. You know, citizens are on both sides of the issue, but there's only one here tonight speaking in favor, no one against, and we have just as much a responsibility to that taxpayer as we do any other. So, that's extremely important for us all to remember, and it's also, if we're going to be predictable, we need to make sure that we act efficiently, and the efficient way to handle this is to, instead of tabling it, is to move it forward with the direction to the applicant here, they can hear us, and we can give them the direction that they need to have a meeting with these residents before they come back to us, and it allows the government to be efficient and them to be efficient. And we're here to do just that, so.
Councilmember Daniels, you still?
Well, I would say they're not here, because maybe they just don't understand what's going on. And I think they have that right to understand, and I'm not trying to change the land use plan. I'd like to table it, let the residents know what's going on, get their opinion of it, and then come back and make a decision based on that. I just don't think that we should just do whatever we want to do, and regardless of what people think or how it affects them, that's just not fair, and it's not something I'm willing to do.
Councilmember Smiley?
Well, the applicant and the applicant's attorney have both said that they wish to speak with the residents, and that, you know, at a time appropriate, and this resolution gives them the time to do that. So, I don't understand quite what the opposition to giving the applicants time to do what they have in fact said they wish to do. So, that's why I support the, you know, the tabling it and to delay it, rather than making an up or down choice here, to say, you intend to speak with the residents, we're giving you time to go speak with the residents. They have heretofore only spoken to the owner of the property, and not the people who live there.
All right, any other comments?
May I ask a question, Mayor?
Council, Councilmember Robinson?
I forgot his name. Just the landowner. Sir, can you tell me how many residents or how many units are occupied on that land?
I believe there are 250 approximate lots. It's probably 50% filled right now.
Okay.
I don't have the current data, because I don't own the park, and they keep moving mobile homes, so it's 50 to 60% occupied.
And I'm assuming you collect the lot rent, is that correct?
The owner, I don't own the --
Oh, you're --
I don't own the park.
Okay, you -- okay, all right. To your knowledge, has anybody contacted the landowner?
Yes, I believe the attorney has spoken with them and met with them one-on-one.
Okay.
And they're in favor of it.
Let me ask some questions. Has the owner expressed to you that anybody in this development has expressed concerns either for or against? I'm sorry to be yelling at you, but I speak loud anyway.
So, the property owner, they express that they're for the development, they're not against it. Just as we continue to move forward, they request that there be an open dialogue, and, you know, we work with them.
My specific question is, did the owner, in their conversations with you, indicate that any of the people that live in the mobile homes have expressed a desire one way or the other?
Of the individuals living in those specific units, that did not come up in that specific meeting.
Thank you.
Because we don't know if he even shared the information with them. That would be a question.
Any other questions, discussions, before we entertain the motion? Madam Clerk, you have the motion still?
Um, yes, let me scroll back up really quick, I highlighted it.
Sorry, sorry, there's been a lot of discussion since then.
It's okay, so the motion is to table until the applicant meets with the residents. That was made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Smiley.
All right, Councilmember Bell?
I don't want to debate any further, but we need to probably provide some more specificity to this, to this motion, like just table it until they have a discussion is very open-ended. Are we going to set a date on it that needs to come back to us, or -- okay.
What type of discussion do you want, too?
Just to make sure they know what --
But who's "they"? The residents and the -- and I guess if there's 250 lots, and let's just say 50% of them are occupied, you're talking about 125 households, what percentage or what would you consider to be sufficient for them to talk to it?
Well, I mean, so, no, because it's up to me. We could send out the letters, make them aware. I don't think we're going to say at least 50% of you need to shut down.
Right, I just, my concern is, like, as we give them direction, let's just not say, hey, let's go meet with them, and they meet with one person, and they say, well, we've accomplished what you've asked us to accomplish. Maybe we're giving them direction that they need to send out letters to everybody, and whoever responds, great. You know, if they don't respond, then, you know --
Then we done, I do deal with it.
That's right.
We don't have a meeting, though, Ron.
Yeah, we'll --
But I would agree with --
There should be a meeting.
But I would, what I would agree with Councilmember Bell about is, is there's got to be some specific ass or language, so they clearly understand what we're asking them to do.
Councilman Daniels. Do you plan to meet with the residents before, you know, is your intention?
No, because I can't explain to residents what they're asking them to do.
Right, right.
I can attend if I'm invited, or if they let me know when it is that time.
When they have a residence meeting.
But I'd like to know that they are speaking with the residents, to let them know what this looks like.
Right.
I don't think we have to be there. It's always nice, but it's not a given. Because what, may I ask you, when you, your plan to speak with the residents? Oh, okay.
Is this a requirement that you're requiring for every change of lane?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I didn't know.
Mm-hmm.
Is this required for every applicant?
When I check where the sign out, I personally put a letter in every residence box.
Okay, I didn't know if this process that you're asking is something that you require of every land use change?
Well, I can't even say everyone, but I think it's important that people understand what is going on in their district and when it affects them. I do, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Smiley?
And to answer your question, it's not a requirement. You have said you wish you had a chance to speak with the residents. Your attorney said it, and your colleague said it, and we're just, we'd like to grant you the opportunity to do it. So, it's not an -- it's not a requirement, we're answering your request for more time, basically.
Yeah, a community meeting with the residents is what is being requested. Do you have a question? Oh, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm going to --
Yeah. Who's got questions?
Do you want to say something?
Well, I mean, technically, we need to ask the questions, if we're going to ask questions for them to come up. So, if you have a question that you want to specifically ask them?
I do not, I just, I would like a community meeting, that the residents receive --
A mailed invite.
A mailed invite, and if they can come, we can come back in 60 days, because they're out of Raleigh.
Okay.
Is that an amendment, or?
She's tabling it until whenever, please. All right, so --
Can I just repeat that, if I'm sure?
Yes, yes, please do.
So, the motion is going to be to table this until the applicant can hold a community meeting and mail out notices? And is that mailing out notices to the residents?
Yes.
Okay.
As well as the owners, so they'll know what's going on.
Okay.
Waiting on stuff.
And then come back in 60 days?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion before we move forward with the vote?
I just say one last thing. While I certainly appreciate and understand the need for constituent outreach, and believe that that is a necessary path forward in terms of making this happen, because there's some concern from the council, I do think that a motion such as this really sends up a red flag for myself as a business owner, and for anybody else wishing to conduct business in the city, that we're going to delay a process essentially to put, because we feel the need to, another step in the process, where we could easily still move this forward tonight, have the final vote ourselves when it comes back, and keep the process moving, rather than, right now, we're delaying it 60 days for these folks, plus the additional time to get the zoning change made. I mean, we're talking 90 to 120 days at this point. I just, I think this sends a real red flag up about what it means to do business in Greenville, so I just want to be vocal about that.
Again, we're granting their request to, they said they wish to speak, they said they want to speak to the residents, we're saying go speak to the residents.
You can't, I think the mayor's closing.
Well, ask them.
Come on, come on.
I'm sorry, if you seem to want to, I'm happy to ask you the question again, if you'd like to speak.
The public hearing may be closed, Mayor, so the council will have to --
Yeah, you'd have to ask a question.
Am I allowed to ask a question to the applicant?
Yes, the --
Thank you.
You all's hearing, if you want to hear from them.
Yes. Do, does the applicant legitimately wish to speak to the neighbors around the property and explain to them their plans?
Respectfully, yes.
Thank you.
However, that can be done after, Councilman Bell's point, the comprehensive land use plan is changed, and that opportunity is re-presented before the rezoning comes up to council. And I think we're all in agreement, certainly my client, Race Track, is willing to have the community meetings, you know, as discussed, which is the Councilman Bell's point, this is the difference between what appears to be a 60-day moratorium on proceeding with any plan in front of the city based on this motion, versus continuing with the process and keeping clients' business interests, and their interest in the city of Greenville in front of, you know, as a top-of-mind issue, rather than where other capital constraints or other decisions might go. And I just think, in terms of the flow of the process, the meeting will happen, and it will probably happen faster under an approval of the comprehensive land use plan, and then attempts to, and then to rezone. Otherwise, there's sort of a, this 60-day window.
So, I appreciate his, they say they have a request. I think he's naive if he's suggesting that a request, that a rezoning request on a map that had already been changed, would actually be a legitimate chance for the neighbors to have a substantive contribution to this process. So, I appreciate that that's technically how it works, but I don't know that that shows a lot of understanding of the way this council works. So, you know, if they want to meet them, and they want to do it in time to give the neighbors the, you know, the respect of showing them what, of explaining their process, and giving them a real opportunity to make a contribution, now's the time. So, I support, again, the motion to table.
All right, is there any other discussion before we move forward?
Just one quick observation to Councilmember Bell's point about, yes, we are very, we welcome business, we certainly want business, but first and foremost, we represent people, and when you present people with something that's already halfway done, you're basically sending a message that they don't matter. And I think all we're saying here is you matter, and we want to hear from you. That's certainly what I intend to say.
Mayor, may I make an observation? I'm sorry.
Councilman Blatt, I didn't mean to cut you off, you need to finish.
Yeah, I mean, I would say the same thing. We've had several of them tonight that nobody showed up, right? And we made, we made a change to the land use plan tonight, and nobody showed up, and so are we being disingenuous to those people?
This is just, and I think --
I guess that's, my question is, like, if it was posted out there, and there's 250 residents, or 250 lots with 50% of them occupied, there's 125 houses over there, somebody had to have seen that sign over there.
You're absolutely right. I think Councilmember Daniels mentioned it, and while City Manager Wall and I and other policy wonks out there love policy and know what all this means, there, most people are just kind of just going through their daily lives. They see a sign, they don't know what, if it affects them or how it affects them. They, they don't understand, you know, and I think we've talked about the vision for this area, once this commercial zoning is in place, again, there's been investments in the mobile homes, and maybe that'll be a stable community, or maybe it won't, once the changes happen, and we'd love to see growth, but I, the reason I'm on this council is to represent people, these residents, and to allow them the chance to know what is happening, and to share their support, their concerns, to let the property owner know what, how they feel about this, and then we can act in good conscience.
Did you reach out to the people?
I have this. So, for one of those that did not show up, yes, I did, when I saw it, I reached out.
But this one, did you reach out to the people?
No.
So, we didn't, we --
Because I'm waiting for realizing that we sent out letters.
Correct.
So, this time, this is different. We didn't send anything to the residents, we just sent it to the landowners, so --
Which is, which is our policy that we --
And that's fine, but I think the residents still need to know.
I mean, I will say that, you know, personally, I can tell you that there's another mobile home park down Highway 33 that's outside of the city limits, that there is a gas station right in front of it, too. And I mean, the gas, I mean, the gas station's there, and they live in harmony, I guess you could say, and probably is an asset, from a safety standpoint, that the residents are crossing 33, because it's right there at the entrance of it. So, I mean, I'd be very careful with suggesting that the people don't understand what's going on, because I think you're belittling them.
I don't, I'm not saying they don't understand, are they aware? We contacted certain people and didn't contact other people. I just think they have the right to know. I think conversations need to be had, and I just feel like that's important, especially when we're saying, at some point, there may not even be homes there.
Which, I mean, that's going to be up to them at that point, because if they're homeowners, they own the property, they've got the right to sell or not.
Well, they don't own the land.
Correct, but they still own the house, which is their personal property that they get to keep, that they could take somewhere else if they so choose, which is the same thing as if the landowner decided to double the rent, he can also, he could ultimately go ahead and take their lot, take their lot, or take their house and move to a different location, so. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned if we start getting into a process of where we're trying to suggest forcefully to an applicant, you should contact every single homeowner individually, or resident individually, whether they're a homeowner or not, when we already have things that we believe are appropriate in place to give notice to the homeowners and to the residents by posting signs. And then I think it's a slippery slope, we start assuming people have not seen a sign that's been properly placed there. It's just as easy to say that they've seen the sign and had no interest in the topic, but I think it's inappropriate to start going down a slope where we say to an applicant, you need to contact every single homeowner before you come up here, and be able to say, you've done that when you walk up here, when you make an application. I don't think that's what we should do, I don't think that's business-friendly, and I think to suggest that anybody that comes up here as an applicant, particularly one who is an attorney, who specializes in the area, that he's naive, I think that's an inappropriate comment to make. Respectfully, I say that, but I say, I'm sure he does it for a living, he does it not, probably just here in Greenville, does it everywhere if he's up in Raleigh, and so I don't think he's naive. Well, I do, I do think we're just getting a very slippery slope, we're trying to say we should do, you should notify everybody. Now, certainly, if you're in the business world, it's probably a good thing to do, but the time ago, it's up to that applicant, and if they choose not to, and then they come into a room like this full of people, and they've got opposition, then we take that into account. But likewise, we do things most of the time when nobody's here. Our meetings are advertised, these meetings tonight are advertised. How many people in here now that are watching and observing us? I mean, the bottom line, we can't ensure everybody is going to have personal notice of everything. If you have interest in your city, and if you ever see a sign that comes into your place and you see it there, you should at least ask questions like, what's going on? That's why I ask the owners, do they have any communications from any of the residents out there? So, to that end, I'm just saying my piece, but I will not vote in favor of delaying it.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Smiley, was that you? Everybody understand the motion?
I'd like to enter a substitute motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the request as --
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with the request as presented and then direct the applicant to hold meetings with the residents of this area before the next planning and zoning meeting to get feedback from them and present that back to the board.
Mayor and council, only one motion can be heard at a time, so it's not an amendment to that motion. So I would ask that the, recommend the council deal the first motion first, the motion to really continue or table, whatever you want to call it.
All right.
Table. You know it's a continuance, a continuance for 60 days.
All right. All those in favor of the first motion, which is?
Which is a motion to table and directing the applicant to get community feedback by holding a community meeting, sending out mailed notices to residents, and then bringing this back in 60 days.
All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
No.
No?
Okay, well, Ben, I'm going with those.
With who?
What's that?
I don't know what to do.
She's not voted, so.
I'm torn.
Get it, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am. She hasn't made her decision yet.
I'm just really, really torn.
Another decision, this is a decision, right?
Yeah. Well, you know, we serve the people and, and I don't know because... I'm not going to do the manual.
Got to vote one way or the other.
You can abstain. That counts as a yes.
Yep.
So is there not an opportunity for compromise here? I mean, the other motion does not, it does not give final authority.
There's a motion on the table.
I understand that. We're having a discussion about that.
I think we disagree as to the impact of this decision here.
Understand.
You're proposing that we...
Understand, but we have a council member who is uncertain about their decision, and so I'm trying to make sure that we move forward efficiently.
Thank you.
Yay or nay?
My problem is, is that once we say yay, do they really have to have a meeting with the residents?
Well, I mean, they have to come back to us to get approval.
So if they don't do that, then that would be disingenuous and you would be able to...
They've said they want to. They said they're going to, so...
All right, all right, okay. I'll just, I'll just, since they're coming back, I'll just say yay.
So you're with those three or these two?
Wow, Peter, thank you.
She voted yes on the motion.
She's pointing at us.
No, she voted, she said yay.
She's pointing at us.
Pointing doesn't count.
We're trying to get clarification, it's up to her.
Yeah, clarify the vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, well...
So again, the motion is, the motion made by Councilmember Daniels is to table this request and have the, direct the applicants to hold community meeting, hold a community meeting, send out mailed notices, and then return to the council in 60 days to consider this request. So if you were to vote yeah, I'll be back.
I'm going to vote yay. I'm going to vote in favor of the motion.
Okay.
And then hopefully I'll see you guys again because, I mean, this is really dealing with people's lives and I know that, you know, you buy the trailers and they buy them from you, and is that how it works? And, you know, I'm just, I just don't want these people to have to look for another place to move their trailers to, you know? Especially when you buy something new, you think you're going to be there for a while.
All right, so motion passes four to two.
Motion passes four to two with Councilmember Bell and Robinson voting in dissent.
Got it. All right.
Did I say yay or no? I said I was going to go on this side.
Now it goes into Daniels' round.
Manuel?
Hold on, hold on.
Hold.
Manuel, roses.
Can we move to the next item, please?
No.
She wants clarification.
I want clarification to make sure that my vote was, was taken right. I didn't vote with the other side. I was saying I was going along with this side.
I heard Charlie say yay. Is that what the clerk heard?
The clerk heard her say yay.
But I have a right to throw my yay.
No, you don't. The vote's been made. The clerk has called the motion. The point of order is, we should move to the next item on the agenda.
The council, council voted four to to adopt the motion to table 60 days.
It looks as though she was confused about what she was voting for.
Yes, I'm serious. Y'all have talked so much, it got me confused. You just keep talking, 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 over and over and over.
She said that she intended to vote with the nays.
Yeah, I said I was going to go with the nays. I actually pointed my hand that way.
So she's asking for clarification if there's a process for her to change her vote or reconsider.
Because, I mean, that's not what I voted for.
Okay, so the vote was four to to pass the motion unless the council wants to, it's your decision if you want to take a vote to reopen the case and vote again.
I'll make a motion.
That'll be, I'm kind of unprecedented, but...
Are we allowed to do so?
I make a motion that we vote again.
Second.
I'm really confused because we are not asking them to do anything other than what they've already said that they want to do. We're not saying we're not going to approve the land use plan agreement or the zoning or any of this. What we're saying is that we represent the people of Greenville, and there's a lot of people potentially involved here who don't have details about what's happening. That's what we're saying. We're not trying to put the kibbutz on any kind of activity. We're just saying, let's allow people to be informed and to have a say and to share their concerns or to share their support, and that's what we've done.
Let's just focus on if we can get a clarification from the attorney, if this is even possible to change the vote. Let's just focus on that.
That is kind of uncharted territory. I know, we could study the Robert rules, a thousand-page document, but the council has voted, it seemed to me that the decision should stand, maybe it could be revisited at a future meeting and added back to the agenda for clarification or for different actions. But the council has made a decision, and to just try to disrupt that and come back and make a different decision at the same meeting seems to be a little much. But it seems like it was very clear, the decision was four to to adopt the motion. So I would ask council to move on and maybe that could be addressed at a November meeting. If the majority of the council wants to do something different, then that could be addressed at a future meeting.
It seems as though she was, as she was trying to make her decision to vote, first, I would observe for the record that she was taking a good deal of time to make her decision, respectfully so, and was going back and forth. And then I would say the record also reflects that when she indicated her vote, she said, I'm voting and pointing to her left and not to her right. So it appears as though there was some confusion as to whether she needed to say yes or no as to indicate her vote because her words said one thing, her actions said another, her physical actions said another thing. So I think there's confusion, so I think we have, need to have clarification for the vote.
Robert rules does also note that until the next agenda item has been addressed, you can revisit.
Again, it seems like the proper move, the council has voted, would be to perhaps take this up at another meeting. The will of the council should control when you vote. I mean, if you all wanted to take a recess, if we could try to look into the rules to see Robert rules about revisiting a motion at the, revisiting a decision at the same meeting, if you all want to do that, we could do that. But I just don't, I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I mean, it's just, the council seemed to have taken a vote of four to two, but it seems like maybe, maybe not.
I think it's different when you clearly express your vote one way without any ambiguity, and then you're trying to come back and change it. But when it's clear that your vote, and certainly your comments before you vote, indicate some confusion, ambiguity, I think there needs to be a clarification exactly what did you intend to vote when you vote. This is not changing your vote when your vote was clearly expressed and you understood it because it was clear that Councilperson Glover was having some sway about which way to go. And I think it was not clear what her voice vote intended to vote for. At least that's what my observations are. I may have members on this council that disagree with me, but because she was saying one thing and pointing to her left to indicate she's voting this way, and then apparently her words indicate she's voting otherwise, so there's, I just, I'm asking for clarification. Again, I don't think this is where she clearly and expressly, without any reservations or any confusion, said, I vote this way, and now after thinking about it for some period of time, is changing her vote. I think it's, I don't think her vote was recorded as what her intentions were, but the best way to, from that is simply to look at and get her to clarify what she intended to mean when she voted. Thank you.
Okay, so this is an excerpt from Robert rules on a motion to consider, to reconsider. If a motion has been either adopted or defeated during a meeting and at least one member who voted on the winning side wants to have the vote reconsidered, such a member may make the motion to reconsider. This motion can only be made by a member who voted on the winning side. That is to say, if the motion was adopted, the motion to reconsider can be made only by a member who voted in favor of the motion. So it appears that...
She can make a motion.
She can make a motion to reconsider.
Yes, I want to make a motion to reconsider.
You should do the vote again.
All right. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. So for clarification purposes, we're reconsidering the vote. So the initial, the initial motion that was made?
You're doing a motion to reconsider the vote that was made, right?
Correct. So it'll be the exact same motion, so nothing changes whatsoever.
Well, first you have to adopt the motion to reconsider. If that passes, then you'll go back to the original motion and vote again.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, raise your hand. All those in favor not to reconsider it, raise your hand. And I'll reconsider it.
Motion to reconsider passes four, three.
Okay? So now we'll go back to the original motion that was made by Councilmember Daniels and second by Councilmember Smiley, correct? Do we have clear understanding of what the motion is?
Yes, I'm going to repeat the motion one more time, okay? So this motion is to table this item, to have the applicant hold a community meeting and mail out notices to residents, and then bring this request back to the council for consideration in 60 days. That is the motion.
All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Okay.
And I'll break the tie. Opposed.
Opposed, okay. Motion passes four, three.
I would like to enter my alternate motion, please, or substitute motion.
I mean, just a motion to...
Well, it was just a motion, correct?
Yeah, a new motion, that's fine. Yep. Motion, well, motion to approve with the direction to the applicant to please conduct your constituent discussions in and around the rezoning, you know, especially not just limited to the trailers.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson.
I'm sorry, can I have you just repeat that one more time?
Yeah, it won't be verbatim, but I would like to approve, I would like to approve the motion as proposed with direction to the applicant to conduct constituent meetings in and around the rezoning area.
You have a timeframe on that, or just...
Before they come back to us at the next, at the next hearing.
All right.
Mayor, can I just, I just want, the staff is looking a little puzzled about the term, I think, in and around. So could you, so could the council member clarify in his motion what in and around means?
Yeah, absolutely. I would say...
Would you say the mobile home park?
Yeah, I would say the mobile home park and the duplexes, the closest bordering properties.
Within a certain radius?
If I need to get that specific, I'd be happy to.
Is that enough, is that enough direction for the council?
So it's really, it's really up to the applicant at this point to make the notification for the community meeting, but I want to make sure, so what the council is indicating, it should be those that live in the mobile home park that are immediately behind, as well as the duplexes that are immediately to the north, as well as adjacent property owners and residents in the general vicinity. And there, that is the expectation. You will notify those residents and you will invite them to a community meeting. Is that what you're saying?
Invite them to a stakeholder meeting, yes.
To a stakeholder meeting.
All right. So everybody understands now. Everybody's got a complete understanding of it, okay? Councilmember Bell?
I'm sure you're fully capable of doing this, but one of the council members was asking, how would we get proof that this happened? Possibly a Zoom where you could capture the attendees or a signup sheet, something along those lines of document. Thank you.
I would recommend a Zoom.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said a signup sheet, yeah. But either one would work.
All right. Motion's been made, it's been properly seconded.
No, I don't know if I captured the second. I mean, the second?
Yeah, yeah, Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Oh.
All right. And I'm in favor.
In favor, okay. Motion passes.
All right. Before we move on, any, anything else?
Reconsider it again. I think we're only one more reconsideration away from a record.
Yep.
We can set the record right here before I leave, before I leave council.
We can. All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to ask that the city council consider canceling the October 23 council meeting.
So moved.
No, we're in second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels, is that right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Back to you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, I truly want to thank the mayor and the council for my resolution, my properly approved resolution. I certainly appreciate it. And I certainly appreciate this wonderful opportunity I've had in the last six years to work with the city of Greenville and with the city council. Thank you all very much, Mayor and Council.
We appreciate it. Let's see. Councilmember Daniels, why don't you start us off?
Sure. I just want to say, Manager Anne Wall, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you. I have learned a lot. Thank you for taking time with this baby when she got on the council and made sure that I understood the ins and outs. You are appreciated, and I wish you well in all endeavors. They are blessed to have you. I didn't say anything ugly before I called so they could change your mind, or you would say. But it has been an absolute pleasure working with you. I would like to remind everyone that early voting started today, and I was the first person to vote in Pitt County this morning. Yep. And please come out, vote, your vote is important. I would like to wish my bonus daughter, Jennifer Keys, a happy birthday. She's a sweetheart. And also to let you all know that I wear purple today for all those who have suffered from domestic violence, for those who have survived, and those who just did not make it out. I pray for them, I pray for their families, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn?
Sure, yes, and I, of course, again, want to say how much I appreciated working with our city manager, and it's really a time, it's the fall, it's kind of a time of reflection. All the things, you know, when you're on council, when you're a city manager, you do things, you do very big things and you do very small things. You do individual, you're able to assist people individually, and you're able to do transformative projects like the $48.5 million build grant, the town common bulkhead replacement, $8 million in Wildwood Park. We have a new salary structure for our police officers. I'm very glad that we've been able to do this as a council. There's some sort of middle area things that we've been able to do, which is... dollars in Wildwood Park, we have a new salary structure for our police officers, I'm very glad that we've been able to do this as a council, there's some sort of middle area things that we've been able to do, which is, we've repaved Fourth Street, yay, we have renovated the dog park, and we've got $10,000 for East Side Park, which has been waiting for funding for 20 years, and then today, on an individual basis, there was a dog, and Chief Salz has left the room, there, oh, there he is, okay, I'm sorry, I thought I saw you, there is a, there is a dog, hey, look, Chief Salz is like me, that dog sits at the dinner table, I understand that, there was a dog that has been loose, the university area for weeks, and Animal Services got that dog today, and that is a very, perhaps a very small thing, but that is really very meaningful, either, certainly to the dog, who's been roaming around scared and starving, but if the owner can be found, that's gonna be so meaningful to the owner, and if the dog is later adopted through a rescue, it's gonna be meaningful for that new owner. So these are just the scope of the things that we do on the council, and things that I'm really happy to have been part of, especially seeing that dog captured today and now in a safe place, thank you. Oh, it's homecoming weekend, too.
All right, Councilmember Smiley? No comment. All right, Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have a ton to say, but happy homecoming to everybody that's gonna be joining us here in Greenville this weekend and coming back to your second home, we welcome you to our city, and we hope you have a great experience while you're here. I would like to address a couple of comments that I heard from my colleagues tonight, I heard the term naive when referring to a professional, I heard the phrase, people who are poor live there when speaking about a community, I heard residents might not understand insinuating, I'm not sure what that was insinuating, but anyway, at any, at any rate, those comments I find to be pretty unprofessional and very disappointing. I mentioned sending up red flags about our community when people are coming here to conduct business, and, you know, people go out and they, they talk about towns and communities and what it's like to interact with, with the governing boards there, and that kind of impression, for a first impression, is just not what we need going out into the community, you know, not just statewide, but nationwide and as a region, so I hope we will be a lot more careful with the choice of words that we use while we're up here, and that's all I've got to say, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Robinson?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. Well, I think I finally graduated beyond rookie status, maybe, and I want to say thank you so much to our city manager who's now leaving, because she guided me through the process, held my hand, babysat me, gave me a milk bottle when I needed one, and thank you for doing that for me, because I needed a lot of help when I jumped in here, and so I appreciate your help. I wish you the best in your new endeavors and your family, and especially your father, I really think about, keep him in our thoughts and prayers. You've done a lot, I mean, I've been a resident of Greenville all my life, except going away to school, come back, and I've seen Greenville grow, I appreciate your leadership here, you've certainly created some, some big waves that are growing us, and you've got some big shoes, Michael Cowan, you've got to keep that wave going and walk those shoes, I have no doubt that you will take that and run with it like you should, and you will, I'm absolutely convinced of that. Everybody out there that's watching us and out in the audience, we got homecoming weekend, come out, the parade starts nine o'clock Saturday morning, we've got Freeboot tomorrow night, come out, I hope the weather's gonna hold out for us, and then the ballgame, we got to win a ballgame, let's hope we can bring one home on, on Saturday afternoon at two o'clock, and let's continue to try and grow Greenville greater and make it a second place to those who want to do business with us. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
All righty. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the great city manager, I've been through a lot of city managers, and I put you at the top, and you have changed so many things, and done so many great things for this city that, and training people the way you have, and working with them and letting them do, involved in the work and not just say, "I'm the manager, so is whatever I say," you have been wonderful in helping our staff get ready for the next phase, and for us also to get ready for the next phase of Greenville City Council, and I just can't say enough for you, you have been good to me, you've been good to our family, when my son died, you were the first one, you were absolutely the first one there, and I just, and that means a lot to people, you know, and, and you've always been there, and, you know, I, I value our friendship as well as our management and everything, we may not agreed on everything, but I would like to think we agreed on most things, and I'm just thank you for the staff, our department heads, and I see the changes, because I've been here the longest, 23 years, I've seen the changes, so I know how much you brought, what the changes, the wonderful changes that you brought to Greenville and to our city council, and I don't just say this myself, I hear this from friends and neighbors and people like that about our city manager, so let me tell you, I'm gonna first learn how to get to your house. I want your address, so I can Google you, so I can get to your house.
Turn and burn.
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to stalk you, I just, I just have a great love for Ann, and she has just been really a wonderful person, not only the city manager, one of the most wonderful people I have ever had to work with.
And that's it, Mayor.
All right. I would like to reiterate what my councilmember said, Ann, thank you so much for all that you've done for the city of Greenville, you've been an outstanding leader, it has been fun to work with you, we've had six years to work together, and I'm sure we've had some spirited moments on the phone and in person over the years, and, you know, I appreciate the fact that you have been so vocal at times, you know, and I say, honestly, I say that as a, as a compliment to you, is, and I've told this to other people, is, you know, being the city manager, you can't say yes to everybody, right, you know, and you can't agree with everybody either, if you are, you're just a pushover, and you're not doing your job, and, you know, I think that this council and previous councils have appreciated the fact that you have been the person that has pushed back and given us a different view sometimes, when we needed a different view, and sometimes took that train and put us back on the track when we fell off the track, you know, so we appreciate that, but you've done a lot of incredible things for our city, your leadership has grown the city to leaps and bounds to where we are now and where we're going in the future. I always say that, like, a lot of times the work that we do here, you don't see or you don't feel it for 10 to 15 years after you're done, right, and so hopefully, five to 10 years from now, you'll come back and you'll say, "Wow, I get to see some of the hard work that I was able to accomplish here," and, and you're gonna be one of the reasons that we're in the situation that we are, so thank you for your leadership, we appreciate it, we'll continue to celebrate you, you're not, you're not leaving yet, we've got another, what, 12 days, but who's counting?
Seventeen parties, yeah.
Yeah, 17 parties, we've got, I think we're doing a roast, I think, next week or something like that, all the city staff, all the city staff and department heads are gonna take part of that and roast the city manager, and Michael, Michael will be taking notes over there, as far as who he's gonna keep and who he's not, no, I'm just kidding, just kidding, staff, we all love you, but anyway, but thank you so much for your leadership, we appreciate it, and on a more serious and more sobering moment, please keep the people in the Middle East in your thoughts and prayers, there's been some just awful things happening over there, you know, right now, I think the President of the United States is giving a speech from the Oval Office, and I mean, if that tells you anything, there's, there's a lot of things going on over the Middle East, and there's been a lot of really awful things, and we've seen families that have been very hurt, lost loved ones, some that don't know where their loved ones are right now, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers, it's a very serious situation, I think it's gonna escalate based off of what I keep seeing, and let's hope that cooler heads will prevail and some peace will be over there in the Middle East at some point, so please keep praying for them, and go out and support our pirates, too. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember, Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much, we're adjourned.